Correspondence, which is room number 12 on the agenda page four. Mr. Mauer, do we have any correspondence?
No, there is no correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Number 13 is special committee reports. We did have some meetings. Are you speaking tonight, or Mr. Solakowski? Yes, no?
Somebody's board member said that, you know, it's getting late. They don't want me to talk tomorrow. Do you want to do it tonight?
Do you want to do it next week? Well, okay.
Okay. Yes, we had a curriculum meeting last night, and we discussed a couple of items. One of the items we discussed was the testing program that's coming in next year at Park. And we have approximately 28 workstations at each elementary schools and a backup system going with it. According to the tech department, we're in great shape, and I'm sure we are. They have the whole summer to work out the bugs if there are any. And like I said, next year and the following year, we're going to be getting into this more and more. We also covered family living. Grade 12, they asked for textbooks because they're so outdated. I guess they're about 15 years old already. They are on the budget for next year, so we did approve that one. We spoke about the middle school. Right now, the middle school currently has a midterm and a high school, just like the, I'm sorry, a midterm and a final exam, just like the high school. What they're planning to do next year, they're studying, and we're going to try it out for one year, is we're going to have what we call a quarterly, a quarterly. Once every three months or every two months, the kids will be tested. They won't have to memorize things for half a year, the entire half-year program. It'll probably be a little less pressure on the kids, and I think they'll do much better with that. We also discussed a baseline reading at the elementary school. This program is for the students with IUPs and special needs. We are trying to raise the standards for these kids, so what happens is we're going to be teaming these kids up, a lot of these kids with the general ed kids, and hopefully we can bring up some of the standards. These kids will be tested three times a year to see how they're doing and to bring up these grades totally. We also spoke about the preschool afters, I'm sorry, the after-school basic skills program, and we're going to be working on that one also. We discussed the L.A., let me see, the planetarium. The planetarium, what we're going to be doing over there, which we have two of in our district, we're probably one of the few schools in the state of New Jersey that has two planetariums going. Last year, a year and a half ago, we purchased approximately 10 to 12 full-schooling showings, and we're going to be working on picking up more. Right now, we're trying to work out a deal, Mr. Sedidino and myself, I'm involved with the county board of education, to talk to all the other superintendents. We have quite a few of them, 21 of them in the district or in the county. And we're trying to set something up on a shared service basis where these people will pay us approximately $1,500, and they'll get 10 showings. This way, they can bring in the kids from those schools. And the programs that we have now are geared for specific grade levels. We will be working on that. We're also working on a shared service with the library, and we're going to be offering the planetarium, the use of the planetarium to the public. This will be done through the library, and hopefully we can work out some kind of a setup at the library where they can put some money into the planetariums also. Right now, what else are we doing with the planetarium? Okay, we want to also open it up for the community, which is the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the athletic departments. For example, with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, if they're working on Merk badges, they can use this planetarium to work out the Merk badge. That's what we discussed there. Also, I discussed a work-study program. I guess about 15, 20 years ago, I gave up the program. And what we did, this was in between Pat Torri and Andy Cuschella, we set this program up where we hired approximately 15 to 20 students. And what I did is I pulled these students out of the general shop classes. A lot of them had IUPs, and these were kids that were falling through the cracks that needed this type of work. And what we did is I set it up where all of the schools in the district, they would ship all their broken furniture to the school over here, and we would set up workstations. Whatever this child's ability was, we had all this furniture repaired. Approximately, we repaired in those days $100,000 to $150,000 in furniture each year. It was distributed back to the schools and the principals. And not only did the kids wind up getting an education, we also paired them up with a lot of the trade people in our school system, plumbers, carpenters, whatever. And these kids would go out on the job, for example, as a helper for that particular day or whatever it was. Transportation was no problem with us because the parents would drop the youngster off in the morning and then pick up the youngster at the end of the day, approximately 3 o'clock. It was a win-win situation for the school system and definitely a win-win situation for the students. The problem is, we have to find a person to run this program, coordinate this program. This person has to have a degree in technology, industrial arts license, because these kids will be working with whatever. You just can't put a regular teacher in there. So I will be working this program out. We can't get it off the ground this year, but possibly for next summer, we can start. And that's basically what I covered on my meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Solakowski. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to take two seconds just then to run through, oh, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, I just want to make a quick announcement. Buildings, grounds, and transportation, I'm trying to put a meeting together for June 11th or 12th. I definitely need to have one before the end of the school year, since we have a lot of projects that will be commencing during the summer months. So I will get that circulated through Mr. Mauer, and just stay tuned. Thank you.
Donna, one more thing. Yes, June 4th, we will be having a meeting with the, geez, policy. Yes, Mr. Borselli asked me to get a meeting going because we went to discuss the following policies: security, use of the buildings, and certification. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Solakowski. Since, let's just take two seconds to go over technology. Basically, huge push in technology due to the new state-mandated park assessment. So, listening to Ms. Moran and some of the other wonderful computer teachers that are there, we seem to be in very good shape. We did have a pilot, and that seemed to work very, very well, not only with the software but the hardware. So, that's a very good thing, because that's a daunting, daunting task to get that ready. So, thank you to the technology department. All right, with that, let's move on. Facilities use, if anybody wants to read it, there are copies up here. Would anybody out in the audience like to speak on any agenda item? Okay. I'll close that portion. Policy, we do not have anything. Now athletics. We have 1 through 5. Could I have a motion, please? Most of these are for coaches. I did, nobody raised their hands, Mr. Sedidino. Athletics, 1 through 5, may I have a motion?
Dunn will make a motion, athletics, 1 through 5.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do I have a second? Mr. Borselli. Now, I know that we may need to have discussion or separation. Okay. All right, roll call, Mr. Mauer.
Dunn? Yes. Hartman?
Yes, I'd like to vote on all except for abstaining for one letter, "C."
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions, 1 through 5, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, curriculum. We are moving 1 through 8. 1 through 8. May I have a motion?
Hartman will make a motion to.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Do I have a second? Mr. Singh will second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Look to the right, look to the left. Roll call, Mr. Mauer.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions, 1 through 8, pass.
Thank you very much. Moving on to finance. Numbers 1 through 12. May I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move finance items, 1 through 12.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Hartman will second.
Ms. Hartman, thank you very much. Any discussion on finance? Seeing no hands, no raised eyebrows. Mr. Mauer, roll call, please.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolutions, 1 through 12, pass.
Thank you. All right, agenda item 20, non-certificated personnel office. Numbers 1 through 11. May I have a motion?
Mungan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mungan. Do I have a second?
Singh will second.
Mr. Singh will second. Any discussion? It's a little tough with the linear spot here. Okay. Mr. Mauer, roll call, please. No one is looking to have a discussion?
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions, 1 through 11, pass.
Thank you. Number 21 on the agenda, non-certificated personnel operational. Numbers 1 through 15. May I have a motion?
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel operational. Items 1 through 15.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Separating number 15 for discussion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Hartman will second.
Ms. Hartman will second. Thank you very much. Before we go to discussion, I just want to point out that most of these are, to leave the board acknowledge, these are no longer one-year contracts. They are multi-year, so we're just acknowledging that we are moving into a second or a third year of the, of their contract guide. Okay, discussion, Mr. Solakowski?
Okay, yes. At the agenda meeting last week, or was it two weeks ago, last week, I believe, we had a presentation from our new janitorial service. And we have approximately, I guess around 80 people that work in our district, and according to what they said, we might lose 15 or 20 of them and, I guess, I don't know, no ones. But the new service, what they do is they provide a supervisor. And this supervisor will go from building to building, just like the supervisor we have now. That's all built into the package, where whatever we're paying these people, they give him a vehicle, he communicates with the administration, he communicates with the people, he has a cellphone, he goes, he does whatever our supervisor's doing right now. So, in my opinion, what I would like to do is eliminate that position. That person's not going to lose the job. That person will go back into maintenance or whatever they were doing before. But hire somebody in that position that has an industrial arts degree and a special ed background. What that person would do, as they go through all the buildings and find out all the problems that we have, possibly work it into this program that I discussed before, the special needs program, to hire these 20 kids to go out and do this work in the community. It's again, it's a win-win situation for the school system, because now we have a backup teacher. In case a teacher, critical teachers of science, mathematics, those areas where kids are working with the hands-on tools or whatever it may be, they're almost impossible to find. This person, if they're certified, in an emergency for a couple of weeks or a month period, they can pick up the slack. So I will not be voting for this position, because as far as I'm concerned, it's a duplicate position, and we can create a new position probably at half the price. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Solakowski. Would anyone else like to discuss?
Just to clarify, what Mr. Solakowski was saying, the way I understood it, this new gentleman that'll be coming in will be assisting our supervisor, reporting to him, because apparently the job is a lot for one person. So I don't know if an elimination, then we'd be right back where we started from. So, the way I understood, anyways, this new gentleman will be reporting to Mr. Canton and assisting him in his duties.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. President? More comment. We have to remember why we are here as board of education and administrators and teachers. We're here for the kids. We're not here to play favoritism for positions or whatever. Thank you.
Mrs. President?
Yes, Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, at this point, I know that ABM has been given the contract through Hynella to provide the services of custodial services for our buildings. Mr. Solakowski's comments have some merit. However, we need to see how this is going to go and work out over the next 12 months before we make any kind of determination. The current person in this position, he's a very vital, integral part of our operation, and quite frankly, you know, nothing should be discussed until we see how the next 12 months pan out with this company. At that point, we can reassess where we stand, and then we can discuss about other alternatives or other, you know, repositioning. But right now, we need to see how it works out with ABM before we take a step forward. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn, I appreciate your comments and your tutelage to De Prima, but in my opinion, I do not want to create another position and put a burden on the taxpayers. This is the way I look at it. If things don't work out, we still have that person, the change of the position, that person is still there. And remember, it's all about the kids. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Solakowski, Mr. Dunn, thank you very much. Mr. De Prima? I have a question about the contract, is it ABM for Hynella? ABM. The contract for them is one year in length?
Yes. It has a termination clause of 90 days.
Listening to what the board members said, everybody has merit, yes, burden on taxpayer, yes, we have a new company. Mr. De Prima's comment about his understanding about the new person's reporting to the supervisor all have merit. If anyone else would like to chime in on a discussion, this would be the opportunity. Okay, Mr. Solakowski, would you like to separate number 15?
Oh, definitely. Sure.
Yeah. All right. No, no, no. All right, so we are going to then call a roll for 1 through 14 and separate 15 for voting. Okay.
Mr. Dunn? Solakowski, this is on 1 through 14.
Yes.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
1 through 14, pass. And on 15, Solakowski?
Definitely not.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes, thank you.
Motion 15 passes.
All right, now, number 22, non-certificated personnel other, which is numbers 1 through 19. May I have a motion?
Mungan will move, but I believe that motion 42 under certificated should be added to this section because it deals with paraprofessionals. I just saw that now, and I, after reading the agenda a few times, but number 42 under certificated appoints the summer program, special ed extended school year program powers. And I think that should be administratively moved and put with the section 22.
Mr. Mauer, 22 is non-certificated personnel other, and the very first thing, number 1, 2, and 3 are about paraprofessionals. So I don't know if, is there?
There's no requirement to do this. You certainly can do it. The public has already been asked to speak on agenda items. I don't believe there's any confusion. So if you want to move it this way, you can move it as it is with the clarification that the number 42 item under certificated personnel does in fact pertain to substitute or to paraprofessionals for the extended school year. So you can move it as is.
Okay. Is that all right to move? Thank you, Ms. Mungan. I think at this point, since we're at 42 or 40, we need a second. We don't have a first.
Yes, you did. Mrs. Mungan will move.
Mrs. Mungan moved it, yes. Okay, so we're going to leave it as is for the voting purposes?
Dunn will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And thank you, Ms. Mungan, for noticing that. I appreciate that.
I wish I had noticed it sooner, but I just.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, anything else? No, okay. Mr. Mauer, roll call, please.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes, on all, and I'd like to abstain on number 16.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
All motions, pass.
Thank you. Okay, 23, certificated personnel, and this includes retirement and people that are, have turned in resignation, so thank you all for your service. And we are moving numbers 1 through.
1 through 44, including the agenda. The addendum, excuse me.
1 through 44, including the addendum. Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Separating number 5 for discussion and vote, please.
Number 5. Okay, Mr. Solakowski wants to separate number 5.
Mrs. President?
I need a motion? Yes, Mr. Dunn?
I have to separate 4, 6, and 34 for voting purposes.
4, 6, and 34.
Mr. Dunn, if you choose, you can just register your vote separately on those when you vote in the roll call.
Very well, then I'll do so.
Okay, thank you.
Just number 5.
On number 16, we just need to make a correction. Letters N, O, and Y need to be removed. Number 16, page 22, letters N, O, and Y.
I don't think we have a motion yet.
You don't have a motion?
We do not have a motion at this time either. Would someone be willing to make a motion? There are numbers 1 through.
1 through 44. With 16 as amended per Dr. Hoker's remarks.
Okay. Separating number 5. So 1 through 44 with corrections, with amendments, with the exception of number 5.
Borselli will make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Borselli. Ms. Hartman will second. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Mauer.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes, and I abstain from 4, 6, and 34.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions, 1 through 4, 6 through 44, pass.
Thank you very much. Now, we are voting for number 5. And I need a motion now for number 5.
We have a motion, but.
We have a motion that included number 5? Or withed number 5?
Mrs. Andriani excluded number 5.
I moved it in my verbiage. I apologize.
Dunn will make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I'll second. Mrs. Andriani will second. Let's move this along. All right, number 5, Mr. Solakowski, do you have to discuss?
Yes, discussion, yes. Yeah, I'm confused. Normally, I am, but this one, I'm really confused on. I have over here 1, 2, 3, 4, I don't want to talk about personnel, but approximately five supervisors in different areas, and are any of them on a 12-month contract? This question is from Ms. Hoker.
Well, I'm not sure which specifically you're talking about, but we do have supervisors on a 12-month schedule.
Okay, thank you. And I'm ready to vote on it. Okay, a little more discussion. I feel that if one supervisor has a 12-month contract, they should all have a 12-month contract. So I can't vote with a yes vote on this because, for whatever reason, it's unfair. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Solakowski, thank you very much. I guess the next question is, are any of them 10 months? Yeah. So this is, this number 5 is a combination of acknowledging existing contracts for both 10- and 12-month subject area supervisors.
It is acknowledging the employment of them. The contracts have expired, and as to be negotiated, as salaries to be determined, the 12-month employees have a contract date that states there that begins on July 1st, 2014. The 10-month employees have a start date of September 1st, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Sedidino. We need to move this. We did. I'm confused. We need to vote on this now, Mr. Mauer, number 5.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
No.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion 5 passes.
All right, thank you. Moving right along. Thank you. For everyone else, that's, we are now page 32, non-certificated personnel, transportation, which is numbers 1, 2, and 3. May I have a motion?
Mungan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mungan. May I have a second?
Hartman will second.
Ms. Hartman, thank you very much. Discussion? Mr. Mauer, roll call.
Borselli, I'm sorry. De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mungan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions, 1 through 3, pass.
Thank you. Number 25, supply equipment and services, numbers 1 through 7. seven, may I have a motion?
Mangan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mangan. May I have a second?
Dunn will second, Supplies, Equipment, and Services.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion? Mr. Mallor, roll call.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sorkowski?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion's one through seven, pass.
Number twenty-six, Transportation, which is numbers one through seven. May I have a motion?
Dunn will move Transportation, items one through seven.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. A second? Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any discussion on Transportation? Seeing no hands, Mr. Mallor, roll call.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sorkowski?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion's one through six, pass.
Thank you, miscellaneous. Numbers one through six. May I have a motion?
Mangan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mangan. A second?
Hartman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
Um, Mrs. President, I'd just like to make a point real quick on number five.
Okay.
I just want to sincerely thank SEPTA and Allison Boss for making a very substantial donation of three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars for the iPad initiative. It shows that SEPTA is making great strides, and they're the ones who actually pushed the iPads on the district, I remember, a few years ago, and now we've implemented iPads district-wide. So, I want to thank Allison Boss and also SEPTA for their generous donation.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Your sentiments are echoed by myself, and I'm sure the other board members. Um, where were... Anyone else for discussion? No, Mr. Mallor, roll call.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sorkowski?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
One through six, pass.
Thank you. We have Board Secretary and Board Business, which is number twenty-eight, on page thirty-eight, only one. Move the Board Appointed Insurance. Hoker, may I have a motion?
Mangan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mangan.
Borsili will second.
Mr. Singh will second, if you don't mind. Um, any discussion? No, Mr. Mallor, roll call, please.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sorkowski?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. We have Hearing of Residents. If anybody else that's here for anything? Yes, okay, we have a familiar face. Come on, Randy.
Hi, Riley Leibowitz, retired teacher for Old Bridge. I just want to acknowledge one of the retirees, Richie Layton. Uh, Richie Layton, um, has given forty-one years of service to this district. Uh, not only has he taught, but he also gave his time to the OBEA when someone was much needed to do things that only he was capable of doing, and he was a great asset to the OBEA, and I just don't want it, you know, pushed aside. He, he is a very special person, and I just want to acknowledge him for working very hard with us for the OBEA. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind words. Yes, I know. You know what? Every, between retirement and, um, teacher recognition. It was, uh, nice to see Randy here. Okay, uh, anyone else? No? All right, we have old business and new business on the agenda. Is there anybody who wants to speak? No, let's move on. Uh, go to the, go to the order.
Yes.
Can we go in order for once? Are we, are we... Mr. Will start, Mr. Borsili?
Okay. So, May, we're not even fully through May yet, and it's been quite an amazing month. Although, you know, every month seems to be an amazing month, but I think May has really, like, shown this year. Um, the lacrosse game, I, I just want to say, I was, I, I was overwhelmed by the response that they had. Um, it was terrific thing to see. Um, many high schools will be able to rally up their student body for an event, but only Old Bridge High School can really, truly bring out the entire community. And it was amazing when I was at the game. You know, I saw teachers and principals and students and kids from elementary school and middle school and high school, and just, just everybody out there wearing their green shirts, and, um, it was just truly, truly amazing. And I have to say, uh, that was completely led by, as far as I know, by this, by the student body of Old Bridge High School. Uh, you know, I'm on Twitter, I follow these, some of these kids. Uh, Chris Simone, um, was, was pushing it on Twitter and, and other students, and they really got the word out there, and they really brought out the community, and, and it was truly amazing. Um, so I want to say thank you to all the Old Bridge High School students, um, for really showing what great things, um, happen in Old Bridge. Um, I went last week to see the Sauk Middle School, um, Spring Musical, and it was, it was truly, truly an amazing show. Um, as, as all of our musicals are, I typically go to the Sandberg and the Old Bridge High School musicals and, and Sauk. Um, it was just terrific as well. Um, those kids were just so talented. The singers, um, were amazing, and those kids had us laughing through the entire play. It was, it was such a terrific show. Um, I went on Saturday night, which, in any of the musicals that I go to, it always seems that the closing night seems to be, in the Spring Musicals, the best ones to go to. Um, and one of the reasons why is you will see the students in, in, in the middle school, the eighth-grade students, with the emotion and, and speaking about how those teachers that lead the production really, you know, mean something to them, and really, you know, taught them so much about, you know, uh, you know, the production and so on, and how they're going to miss it, you know? Um, even though they're, they're, these kids are going to be moving on to, to high school and, and have that same great experience, but they, they truly, truly love it, and it means so much to them. Um, you know, I know, uh, I've gone to the high school once, and, you know, that, that Spring Musical, you could, you could tell who the seniors are. They, they get very emotional towards the end on that last, last production, and it really just shows you how much, um, that, that those performing arts really mean to these students. Um, one thing that I was amazed at was during the intermission, um, they have in the cafeteria, uh, an area, um, cornered off with, with tables where the students that are performing in the play are, um, and I have to say, um, Mrs. Elfman's probably gonna be quite upset with me, but I did peek through. Um, I know she told us we weren't allowed to, but I did peek through at one point, because I, I overheard one of the, uh, one of the students, um, and I looked in, and he was, it was Brendan O'Dwyer, he played Edna in the play, um, and he was hysterical. And he was rallying up his castmates to really finish strong on their final performance in the second half of that performance, and it was like watching, you know, a star quarterback at halftime of a game, fire up his team to finish that game strong. And it, it, it was just truly amazing. Um, so, congratulations to all of them for putting on such a terrific show. Um, uh, last night, I was here, um, I watched our orchestras, um, perform, the middle school orchestra and, and high school, and, um, our orchestras, the, the one thing I have to say is that I, I, I just feel that they don't get the publicity that they truly deserve, because they are an amazing orchestra. And I'd really like to see more people start to come out to see them, because, um, the music is just incredible. And the middle school, we have the middle school orchestra, it's combined, Sandberg and Sauk for one, um, for one orchestra, and they, every year, go to Great Adventure for a competition. Um, and I've chaperoned it the past, uh, three years. I'm chaperoning it again, we're going on Friday, and these kids are just, they're really, really terrific kids, and the past two out of three years, they've won Best Overall Orchestra. And this year, I, I, I think it's the best that I've seen so far. Um, so I expect great things from them on Friday, and I, and I wish them the best of luck. Um, one last thing, I'd like to, or actually, two more things, I'm sorry. Um, Chrisam School, PTA puts together a musical every year. Um, they, they do a terrific job, uh, those ladies, and that PTA just really, really work hard to help these students get up there and sing a bunch of songs, and they put together some great costumes and everything. Um, that's going to be on June sixth at seven PM right here in this auditorium at the high school, so I encourage people to come out and see it. Um, I know a number of our elementary schools put together some musicals. I've been to a number of them, and it's just great, these, these, uh, these young, young students out there, up there on the stage. Um, they love it, and they do such a great job. Um, and, uh, the Old Bridge Township Council is going to play a charity softball game against the Old Bridge Board of Education to benefit the Relay for Life of Old Bridge. That will be on June seventh at ten AM at the baseball field at the Lombardi Complex. Um, there's going to be some light refreshments, there'll be a fifty-fifty, uh, they're going to raffle off some Yankee tickets, uh, they'll be asking for donations for Relay for Life, so come on out and, and cheer us on, and, and let's just have a fun day, um, and raise some money for Relay for Life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. Mr. Dunn?
Good evening. Again, I want to thank the seventeen extraordinary educators for their dedication and hard work, and, and it's proven that our educators in this district is propelling this district to the twenty-first century and through, and, and it's just an incredible thing to see how well our staff is moving this district. Thank you again. Number two, tonight, during the, the recognition of these fabulous teachers, three of the teachers were counselors that were recognized for their efforts, and this brings back a memory of a battle that this Board of Education had back in two thousand twelve to hire elementary counselors back into the schools. Initially, we, we lost grant money from Title I, so there was a huge discussion on whether or not we were, we were going to fund, um, councils for each of the elementary schools, and based upon, uh, you know, lengthy discussions and, 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 you know, a battle that brewed, and we had, uh, Ms. Donna Kibler, who supported that initiative, uh, very vigorously, and she convinced many of us to vote for the counselors. And now, two and a half years later, we're seeing the direct results of, of these councils in the schools. Being named National School of Character is an extraordinary feat, and that's putting us on a national stage. And when you see those accolades, you have to wonder, is Old Bridge doing that well? Are we excelling? Are we doing what's in the best interest of our children? And the answer is yes, we are. And yes, we do come back to the taxpayers for more money. Obviously, with, that money's being well-spent with all these wonderful things that are going on in the district, and I just wanted to bring that out to everyone's attention, because yes, we just approved a two percent increase, but we need to also make sure that everyone understands all the wonderful things that are happening in this district, and all the accolades that we're receiving for schools of character, whether it's on a state level, on a national level, or even a national model school, as Cheesecake has just been named. That's fabulous, and that's showing that we're spending the tax monies, the taxpayers' money very wisely, and we're going to continue that battle. We want to bring better and bigger programs and bring more accolades to this district, whether it's with the performing arts, whether it's sports, schools of character. We're going for, uh, the, the, the moon. That's the goal of this Board of Education. Thank you to all the wonderful seventeen. Absolutely fabulous job. Another point real quick, I want to conclude, because I know it's getting late. I was, uh, privileged to, uh, see a night of song at the high school, uh, on Friday evening, and the women's choir did a fabulous job. I also have to point out, there was, I think, seven or eight, or maybe ten boys in the choir, and, uh, Mr. Updike did a, a fabulous job, and, and again, you know, like Mr. Borsili was saying, we're exceeding and doing very well in the performing arts, and, and he eloquently described the middle school's program, and everyone's doing wonderful, and that's just a testament to this district and the taxpayer funding it. Everyone is working as a community to do wonders, and we want to continue that effort. So, thank you, thank you, and, uh, good night.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes. Again, I would just like to thank all of the teachers, um, that were involved with the recognition tonight, um, and all of the teachers, everybody that's involved in educating the children. Uh, and the results are, we look at our children today, and where they are, and where they're going, who's going to colleges, who's doing vocational work, and the proof is right there that, yes, we are excelling. I agree with Mr. Dunn. Uh, we also had counselors that were part of this recognition, and yes, we did have a problem back in two thousand and twelve, but we also had a problem all the way in the beginning, in two thousand, when we first brought the guidance counters into the school district, because we didn't have them. All right, and we applied for a grant, and we did receive the grant, and Ms. Kibler, yes, she were involved with that at the time, as was myself, and, um, we did studies on it to make sure that the program was working well, and it certainly was to the benefit of every child in the district, and I'm very, very glad, okay, that we do have them today. So, I want to thank them also. Um, and just one more thing, uh, the Field Day, I had the opportunity of going to the Special Needs Field Day down at Lombardi Field, and it's the third year in a row that we've done it. And I have to say, it was just a wonderful thing to watch. We had some of our, our high school students there that were working in conjunction with the other parents and that, that were there on the field, and the children loved it. It, it was, it was just something to see, and I'm hoping, okay, I'm, I'm hoping that we possibly could have another Field Day instead of one a year, possibly two. Okay, I would like to see that happen, because it certainly is to the benefit of all of the children and the children that were working in conjunction with one another. It was just a wonderful thing to see. Also, I would like to thank Allison Boss and Wendy Karucci. They have been involved with SEPTA for as long as I could remember, and their children have already graduated and been out of the school, and they still are participating, okay, with the PTA. They're a wonderful group of people. Um, Dr. Turie and Mrs. Minchclass, they were all there that day, and, you know, I thank you for everything that you do for the special needs children, because it certainly is a wonderful program, and it's wonderful things that you do for them. Other than that, you know, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Mr. Sorkowski?
I said it before, we're just repeating the same thing over and over again. Okay, uh, yeah, again, I would like to congratulate the seventeen teachers that received the awards, but just like Ms. Hartman said, it's not only the seventeen, it's all the employees in our district, whether they're teachers, whether they're aides. If you're working with the children, we know what you're doing. Thank you very, very much. Uh, the K kids at the high school in the state of New Jersey, I guess there must be, uh, six hundred something districts, I guess there's over four hundred, uh, clubs, you know, throughout all these districts. They came and entered the state for a fundraiser. I don't know how many thousands of dollars, but I didn't get that information yet, that they did raise at the high school year, and they will be giving a lot of this to Camp Robin, and all this money at the end of the year is distributed. Last year, I think they distributed thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars to Make-A-Wish Foundation, Cancer Research, uh, Camp Robin, all these organizations. Good luck to all our retirees, the three, uh, and especially, good luck to all the people that we hired today. That was a big list. Everybody got a job next year, so far, so far. We didn't get the central administration yet, that's coming up next month. We'll see how that goes. Okay? Uh, like Mr. Dunn said, we keep going each year and asking the taxpayers for more money. I think that's unfair. What we have to do is come up with a better, better idea how to get some funds in the system. So, I'm going to give you a couple scenarios on what I would do if I was running the school system over here for a fundraiser. We should form a committee, buildings and grounds, and probably strategic planning combined, and see how can we make money for our school system over here, so we don't have to keep raising these taxes for these poor people in this community. We have a gorgeous cafeteria. Being a wedding photographer for approximately twenty, twenty-five years, height in my career, I was shooting a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five weddings a year. I had fifteen, twenty students that went through the school system here, that we trained, that were working with me. We have this cafeteria. Why not use it for commercial use by sweet sixteen parties, weddings, bar mitzvahs, whatever it may be? I mean, if you can book a hundred parties and make yourself four or five thousand dollars a year, not only that, but give the kids training in photography and video where they can run the whole party. We have a K and X service wedding. This funding will go to the school system. You can probably simulate maybe a quarter of a million dollars to half a million dollars for an operation like this. Another idea I have is, I'm involved with collectible shows. I've been promoted for quite a few years. Uh, we can run four large shows in this cafeteria, or in the gym over here, bringing four, five hundred dealers. These dealers will wind up paying you four or five hundred dollars a piece for the tables. This would probably take a year to pull off the ground, but you can probably bring in three quarters of a million dollars, and the, and the PTAs can run the concession stands. This is how you make money. We just can't go on the way we are, because for the average person, like Mr. Borsili said, he hasn't gotten a raise in three, three years, or four years, or five, whatever it is, and there's a lot of people out there, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the people, they're not getting these raises. But in education, we have a blank paycheck over here. We do what we want. As long as we can convince this panel of nine people that this is what we need, they're going to vote for it. But are they really communicating with the taxpayer? I don't think so. Another idea that I have is a planetarium, which should be discussed before. We have to open this up. This is a moneymaker, but now, as we open this planetarium up and bring in all these groups, we can probably turn this into a business that will bring in a hundred fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year. Remember, this is a showpiece. We're the only school system probably in the state of New Jersey with two planetariums, and this was Pat Torrey's dream, and he put this together. Very good. I was involved at Meadowsex County College for quite a few years, uh, running a, running and working with a summer, uh, program. We tossed it around a little bit, but for the local college, which is a very large moneymaker, you got to remember, in our community today, where we have most of our parents working, they don't get two months off like school teachers, but school teachers don't get paid in the summer. I'm on your side. The administrators are getting paid in the summer. They get their twenty to twenty-five days off during the school year, and allow them another month off in the summer. In the real world, that doesn't happen. The average person gets two to three weeks vacation, and that's it, and they don't get increases in pay. What we have to do is establish a program here at the high school, hire a lot of teachers, but not through the association, because we can't pay them forty, fifty dollars an hour. Hire these teachers, just like I got paid twenty-five dollars an hour to run a program at the local college, and we can probably set up programs, educational programs in the school system here for three to four thousand kids. He's probably a level moneymaker of maybe a quarter of a million dollars. I mean, the list goes on and on. I don't want to bore you people, but I have so many ideas how to make money for the community where the taxes don't go up anymore. Thank you, good night.
All right, Mr. Sorkowski. Thank you. Mr. De Prima?
Okay, thank you. I don't like sitting at this end, because all I do is repeat what everybody else said. Uh, um, teachers, obviously, tonight, congratulations to everybody. You guys are a big part of why this, this district is flourishing, and we're just going to keep getting better and better. Uh, as Mr. Borsili said, please come out to the softball game. It's, it's, it should be good for a few laughs, if nothing else, and, uh, this, you know, how we're going to, we're going to... laughs, if nothing else, and, you know, we're going to raise money for a good cause, Relay for Life. And lastly, again, as Mr. Borcili said, the Salk play, if anybody from Salk is still listening, thank you. It was an amazing, amazing performance. I was in awe. Mrs. Elfman, Mrs. Kelly, thank you for guarding our students. Again, as Mr. Borcili said, I was there Saturday night, and the children at the end, just the emotions and the thanking and the crying, and it was an amazing, amazing show. If you did not see it, please watch cable, as Mr. Gudjuski told me, it'd probably be on in about two weeks, and the schedules go up every Monday, so please look out for it, you will not be sorry, it was an amazing night. Thank you.
Ms. Mongan?
Thank you. Tonight has been a night to give thanks and to recognize those that served the school district so exceptionally well. We should also remember that Monday is Memorial Day, and that's the day that we give thanks to all those that have served and allow us to live in this great country of ours, and I just want to wish everyone and their families a happy Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Mr. Singh?
I think you made my job easier, so you said everything. That's great, and I just want to say that it's a collective effort to give education, everybody from, like, teaching, non-teaching staff, and the leaders, Mr. Seid, you know, you know, they're all doing a great job, and I have a daughter in the school system, I prepared her to be a doctor, it's like, you should be a doctor in your life, but she came to me once, she said, I want to be a teacher. I said, why? She said, they are great people, and I think it's because of you that she feels that she wants to be a teacher, because you are the role models for the kids, and I don't want her to be a doctor now. Let her be a teacher. Let us say that I'm a teacher like her, like her, like her, so thank you very much for being a teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Singh, that was lovely. As a matter of fact, Mr. Borcili said something about his daughter today, that she also wants, she's a little one, right? How old is she?
She is a second grader.
She's in second grade, and she's so inspired by her teacher, who happens to be the Teacher of the Year, that she told her dad that she would like to be a teacher.
She was, one moment, I was in a store, I won't name the store, but with my daughter, and there's this lady comes, and she screamed from a distance, and then, heard her, they talked about like five, six minutes, I was like, who is she? And then they, like, said, they had tears in their eyes, and when she left, and I asked my daughter, who was she? She was like soccer mom or something. No, she was my teacher. I said, that's what the teacher should be, you know, when they need their students, they should feel that they still are connected to them, and I think we have a lot of those here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. I happen to like Mr. Solakowski's idea about having antiques and collectible shows, so if we could work that out, I think that would be great. We have wonderful people, wonderful things being said about so many programs and so many teachers and para-professionals tonight. I want to echo everyone's sentiment, but I do want to read the names of the three people that are retiring, because after all these years of service, they seem to have gotten lost in the shuffle because of the Teacher of the Year recognition, and that's Richard Layton, forty-one years of service, science teacher, compadre, Veronica DeBruin, twenty-five years of service, and Lena Russo, for fifteen years of service. So thank you very much for serving the children of all good.
Are they here, Donna? Are they here?
I don't, they might have been. They're home doing homework now, grading papers. All right, at this point, I've lost my place on the agenda, but I think we're ready for an adjournment. However, we do have to go into closed session, so I need a motion for closed session.
Dunn will make a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, Ms. Hotman will second, Mr. Marrow will, no discussion on that, I don't think we have a choice. Mr. Marrow?
Just for clarification, this is a brief closed session for matters of personnel pertaining to the Industrial Arts Instruction Program.
Okay.
Borcili?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely yes.
Hotman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion to go into executive session, pass.
All right, thank you, and we will come back early to close the meeting, so we will not be coming back to conduct any business.